Good afternoon, I would like to call the meeting to order. Welcome everyone to the March fourteenth meeting, two thousand twenty-four of the City County Planning Board. Would you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Today's meeting is being broadcast live on TV thirteen and will be rebroadcast at ten AM Friday morning and again at four PM Sunday afternoon. Our first order of business today will be the consent agenda. These are items with which the petitioner is requesting withdrawal or continuance or items with which staff has recommended approval and no one has signed up to speak in opposition. For public hearings today, each side will have a total of twelve minutes. There will be no rebuttal period. Once the public hearing is closed and the board goes into work session, no one is permitted to speak unless a planning board member asks them a question. For general use district zoning requests, the planning board must consider the full range of uses allowed in the zoning district being requested. The petitioner may not refer to a specific use for the property. For special district zoning requests, however, the petitioner must identify the intended use or uses of the site and give specific details on how the site will be developed. Items under section B of the agenda will require final action by the appropriate elected body, either the city council or county commissioners. As such, votes taken today by the planning board concerning these items are recommendations that will be reconsidered by the elected bodies during their review of the request. Before addressing the planning board today, if you're speaking, you will need your name, address, and zip code for the record. Our first item of business are the approval of the minutes of the February eighth and February twenty-second meetings. Is there a motion?
Move approval, second.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs, any discussion? Those in favor sign of aye. Aye opposed, the same sign, that is unanimous. I'm now gonna call on Mr. Mark Allred to review the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So first up is item D one, PBR twenty twenty-three oh one. The applicant requested withdrawal that was received eight or more days prior to this planning board meeting, so it has been withdrawn. And next is item B four, W thirty-six twelve. The applicant requested continuance that was received more than eight days prior to today's meeting. It will be continued to April the eleventh. This is B one, this is no longer on consent. Our first case up for consent is case B two, this is W thirty-six ten. The applicant is Brook and Branch LLC. This is general industrial to pedestrian business, a zero point seven three acres at north of Wacovia Street, between Brookstown Avenue and Branch Street. So the location map has a hotel to the north, office and restaurants to the east, and industrial uses to the south and the west. The aerial is showing a developed property with two buildings. The rest of the surrounding site is already developed. The area plan recommends commercial for this site. The request is consistent with the recommendations of South Central Area Plan and Legacy two thousand and thirty. The proposed district is compatible with the surrounding land use pattern and provides an opportunity to redevelop an older existing industrial site in GMA two. For these reasons, staff recommends approval.
Are there any questions for staff? No one has signed up. Is anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing is closed. What is the motion of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move the planning board find that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Second. Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs, any discussion? All in favor, sign of aye. Aye opposed, the same sign, that is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I further move the planning board recommend approval of W thirty-six one zero.
Second. Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs, any discussion? All those in favor, sign of aye. Aye opposed, the same sign, that is unanimous.
Next I have is case number B three, this is W thirty-six eleven. Petitioner is Hillcrest Property Development LLC. This is highway business special use, a mixed use special use to general business special use. This is a one point five eight acres at the northwest intersection of South Stratford Road and Hillcrest Center Drive. The petitioner is requesting rezoning of property at GBS to add the use restaurant with a drive-through. To the southeast is South Stratford Road and Railroad. The rest of the property surrounding it is part of the Hillcrest Town Center development. So the aerial shows a graded property within the Hillcrest Town Center as currently undeveloped with development going on into the south and the southeast. And to you see to the north, this is still undeveloped, but still part of the Hillcrest Town Center. The Southwest Suburban Area Plan recommends this as commercial and it is within the Hillcrest Activity Center. So the site plan has a thirty-seven hundred square foot restaurant with a drive-through. It's located in central portion of site with multiple access points off Winter Haven Lane. This is thirty-seven parking spots are required, thirty-eight are proposed, and you see a ten-foot street yard that's along Hillcrest Center Drive, Winter Haven Lane, and South Stratford. Sidewalks are located on both Winter Haven Lane and Hillcrest Drive with additional sidewalks connecting up to South Stratford, up to the transit stop. Winston-Salem DOT will be looking at doing sidewalks along South Stratford, but in a comprehensive nature. So they'll be doing it all at one time and not piecemealing it. The development requires that all structure along South Stratford Road to be majority brick. The elevations meet that standard. The request would facilitate the development of a commercially zoned site, which has remained undeveloped since two thousand and three. And the proposed use provides a public gathering within the Hillcrest Activity Center. For these reasons, staff does recommend approval and the site plan meets UDO requirements.
Are there any questions for staff?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Wasn't there a case for Starbucks, is that adjacent? Which property would that?
It's right here.
Also across Hillcrest. Okay, just wondering.
Any additional questions? No one has signed up. Is here, is anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed. What is the motion of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move the planning board find that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Second. Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs, any discussion? All those in favor, sign of aye. Aye opposed, the same sign, that is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I further move the planning board recommend approval of W thirty-six one one.
Second. Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs, any discussion? All those in favor, sign of aye. Aye opposed, the same sign, that is unanimous.
Next up is case C one, F sixteen forty. The applicant is George Bambalas, an AP Bambalas of Tri-BAM Investments Access Easement. This is an off-site access easement of thirteen, own thirteen point nineteen acres on the west side of Dalton Road, on both sides of intersection with Dalton Court. The private off-site access easement is required when off-site access easement is going through a residentially zoned property to a high-intensity non-residential zoning district such as LI. The RS forty zone site is located in GMA five with RS forty on all sides except for this LB property you see here to the southeast. So what you see here on the site plan is a twenty-five-foot easement that connects Dalton Court to the landlocked property that you see here on the south side. This property to the south is being petitioned for rezoning to LIL. Site plan does meet UDO requirements.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval, second.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs, any discussion? All in favor, sign of aye. Aye opposed, the same sign, that is unanimous.
And the last one on consent is case D two, PBR twenty twenty-four dash oh four. The applicant is Clark Fifth LLC. This is Quarry, Quarry Overlook. It's a thirty-one lot PRD and RS nine zoning. It's six point seven one acres at the northeast intersection of Flat Rock Street and Bedford Street. The RS nine zone site is located in GMA two and surrounded to the east, west, and south by other RS nine or single-family residential zoning. And Quarry Park is up here to the north, it abuts it to the north. So what you have here is a thirty-one lot PRD that will extend Flat Rock Street up into the property. The PRD will have two access points with this access point here and a future access point to the east. There is a pedestrian connection from the Activity Center up to the Quarry Park with one stormwater device and a buffer yard that goes around the entire site. Site plan meets UDO requirement and staff recommends approval.
Mr. Chairman, I move the planning board approve PBR twenty twenty-four dash oh four.
Second. Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs, any discussion? All those in favor, sign of aye. Aye opposed, the same sign, that is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, the board will not go back and hear case B one, W thirty-six oh nine.
Good afternoon. So first case for tonight is going to be W thirty-six oh nine. The petitioner is Tiffany W. Evans. The site is approximately one point two two acres at the southeast intersection of Lock Drive and Renolda Road. The request is for a general use rezoning from limited office special use to RS nine. So the parcel is located in GMA three suburban neighborhoods. The site is adjacent to single-family residential to the south and to the west. The site is located in the West Suburban Area Plan and it recommends office and low-intensity commercial, recognizing the zoning district that has existed there since two thousand and six in the previous rezoning case. The site is undeveloped with a gentle descending slope from west to east. And so looking south on Lock Drive with the subject property on the left and looking north from the property across Renolda Road, the subject property is on the right. Looking across the street, west along Lock Drive, the subject property is to the right. And then looking east along Renolda Road and looking north at the subject property from Lock Drive. The last one, looking north from the top of the property across Renolda Road. And so the proposed request is consistent with the recommendations of Legacy two thousand and thirty for promoting compatible infill development. The site has excellent multimodal access to pedestrian and mass transit facilities and the request provides an opportunity to redevelop an underutilized property within GMA three to provide needed housing opportunities. And for these reasons, staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? All right, thank you. Great job, first time.
Good job.
All right, so we will have a public hearing on this case and we will let the proponents go first and that's Sadler.
Judy Stalder.
Oh, sorry, Judy Stalder and then go to opposition. If you'll state your name, address, and zip code for the record, please.
Thank you. My name is Judy Stalder, ten twelve Wellington Street in High Point, two seven two six two. And also here to answer your questions is Trip Bunker from Sagamore Homes. Ellie did such a great job, but I'm just gonna add a few more things. This is a general RS nine zoning, so I can't really elaborate on any conditions. But the property's been zoned for a bank for a while now and there's been no forward movement. So we just don't think that the market recognize that, recognizes that as the right use for this property. Our owner of the property is ready to move forward. Sagamore Homes is ready to build homes on this property and this is, we're in a situation where we need more homes. We met with the neighbors in the area, a few of them attended our meeting. The general sentiment was that single-family was better than a bank in their neighborhood. So we respectfully ask for your favorable approval.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. How much time is left?
Eleven minutes.
So we have eleven minutes if anyone else would like to speak in support. All right, we will now move to the opposition. I have Robert Lawn, or Lawn? Lawn, all right. If you would approach the podium, please, sir, and state your, can someone help, help him, please? Thank you. Mr. Lawn, if you'll state your name, address, and zip code for the record, please.
My name is Robert Khan. I'm at three oh two five Lock Drive, zip code two seven one oh six.
Thank you, Mr. Khan.
And I'm, my property is directly adjacent to this proposal. When I moved in, there were, in nineteen eighty-six, there were, there was a house and a rental house and an outbuilding on the property. They've all been torn down. And as you've heard, there's been a series of proposals for commercial use on the property. However, this proposal, as it's described, would jam four houses on, onto the property, including bringing it very close to my house and very close to Lock Drive as described, rather than being set back as the other houses. It's extremely close to, to my property and I'm just concerned it will change the nature of my property. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Khan? All right, thank you, Mr. Khan. How much time is left?
Also eleven minutes.
Thank you. All right, we have eleven minutes left for anyone else who would like to speak in opposition. All right, seeing no one, I'm gonna declare the public hearing closed. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move the planning board find that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Second. Of a motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs, any discussion? All those in favor, sign of aye. Aye opposedes, that is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I further move the planning board recommend approval of W thirty-six zero nine.
Second. Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs, any discussion? All those in favor, sign of aye. Aye opposed, the same sign, that is unanimous, motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, board, the next case we'll hear is case B five, F sixteen thirty-nine.
If you don't mind, can someone help Mr. Khan up? Let him know that it passed, please, thank you.
Those seats aren't very conducive to get in and out of.
Thank you, Mr. Khan. Thank you so much for helping.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon, Mr. Smith.
As Chris mentioned, this is case F sixteen thirty-nine. The petitioner is Tri-BAM Investments LLC. It is a zero point four two acre site located on the north side of US four twenty-one, west of Dalton Road. And the request is for special use, limited use rezoning from RS forty to limited industrial, limited use. This property, or this site is located in the far western part of the county in GMA five. This location map shows that it is a partial pin. Let me turn on the laser pointer in one second. So the overall parcel is this, then they did submit a partial pin just for this yellow shaded section of the property. There is RS four use zoning to the north and west. It is primarily large lot residential uses. There is this LB zoning to the east. It is currently undeveloped commercial land. And to the south is US four twenty-one. The parcel is currently landlocked and the off-site access easement that you discussed earlier at this, at this meeting was to provide access to this particular site. The aerial again shows that it is generally a flat and forested parcel. It's surrounded on three sides by forested rural residential land and vacant commercial land. The area plan that addresses this property, it's located within what's called the Western Rural Area Development Assessment. It doesn't offer parcel-specific land use recommendations, but does provide some general recommendations of what to do for the overall site. And just to provide some additional reference, this particular parcel is located about two miles down US four twenty-one from the Lewisville Corporate Limits, which is where the no, the closest view corridor for a billboard starts. So just to provide some reference of where it could be. Next are a few site photos. This is looking north from US four twenty-one into the subject property. This is looking west along US, US four twenty-one, the subject property is to the right. This is looking north from the other side of US four twenty-one at the subject property. So some quick analysis as well. So the requested use for this district is only the signs off premises use. The proposed use would still need to meet all the sign-specific, or the use-specific conditions of sign off premises and the signage standards for Forsyth County addressing off-premise signs. The site is currently inaccessible from any of the surrounding roads. Access is dependent upon approval of an elected body's special use permit, which is the separate action item you all considered earlier. Per the deputy county attorney, the rezoning request would likely be considered a valid exercise of legal authority and not an illegal spot zone. Just to provide some additional information. In summary, given the site's location in a rural residential area, the lack of direct access to the site and the fact that the requested use is inconsistent with the recommendations of Legacy two thousand and thirty and the Western Rural Area Development Assessment, staff believes that this request is inappropriate for this location. And specifically, Legacy does recommend reducing the visual impact of large signs throughout the county and the proposal also doesn't consider the preservation of rural view sheds as recommended in Legacy two thousand and thirty. Other locations of a more commercial nature might be more appropriate. Staff believes this request could precipitate additional off-premise signs along this rural portion of US four twenty-one, which, as mentioned earlier, is roughly two miles from here to the Lewisville Corporate Limits and two miles going the other way to the Yadkin County line. So it's about a four-mile stretch that's not in a view corridor right now. In conclusion, zoning, or staff does recommend denial of the request. And I'm happy to answer any questions you all have.
Any questions for staff?
Why is the view corridor not, why is this not in the view corridor? If we've considered this four-mile strip of land to be important from a view corridor perspective, why is it not in the view corridor requirements?
Those are questions I can't answer. The original view corridor map was considered and adopted in the mid nineteen eighties. I don't know. I was surprised whenever this initially walked through the door that this wasn't in a view corridor. So again, I don't know, there's, the, the file history is somewhat spotty on rationale behind text amendments and things in the past. So again, I know the view corridor in and of itself concept came about in the mid nineteen eighties because that's when there was actually, as part of the adoption of that, there was an amortization of billboards also. By state statute, the amortization had to be funded. You had to pay to have signs removed and the council and the commissioners, I believe, funded that for a period of time and then made a decision they were no longer gonna fund the amortization. So I really do not know why it was not included. But it's not. So it's not in a view corridor, so therefore, you know, they are allowed to ask for a rezoning if the planning board and the elected body are so inclined to approve it. It would allow a billboard and it's our thought process is it's not appropriate because given kind of the rural nature of where it is and the fact that it perhaps would set a precedent. I think, you know, moving forward on a future work program, that may be something that would be worth investigating as far as extending that view corridor to the river along that line. But again, you know, we have to deal with the regulations as they are today. So therefore, you know, basically, they're, they're allowed to ask and, you know, again, it's, it's ultimately up to the elected body as to what they decide to do.
If we were to approve the petitioner's request, what would, what further requirements would have to be fulfilled? Aren't there some DOT requirements?
Yeah, I mean, that would still have to go through, you know, obviously, if, you know, if you were to recommend approval and ultimately the county commissioners approved it, yes, they would still have to get permitting from both us and from NCDOT.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And would this allow both digital and?
Okay. Our ordinance doesn't differentiate. One of the things our ordinance, if you've noticed, there has been a, there have been a lot of billboards that have been converted and our ordinance is silent to that as long as they do not increase in size, height, area, et cetera. You can actually take a static billboard and change it to an electronic billboard within our, within our jurisdiction. So, so it would not differentiate.
Depending upon the outcome of today's board action, if the opportunity were to remain open thereafter, when could we request that the, that the view corridor be revised to include this area?
Mr. Steelman, that would be probably the earliest we could look at that would be in the next fiscal year on the work program that we will be starting discussions with the board in May. Again, just remember that we still have to focus on the comprehensive plan for
Of course.
probably the first part of that year, but there's definitely some opportunities if that's something that the board wants us to consider.
Are there any limitations either in the, I don't, I don't think they'd be in the UDO, but does DOT have any limitations on spacing between billboard sites? So in other words, can you put one fifty feet from another one?
We actually, there, there even, you know, if this were to be approved, let's say, let's play out the string and say that, you know, regardless of what the planning board recommends, that when it went to the elected body, that they decided to approve this. Once that billboard goes there, there's actually a spacing between that billboard and any future billboard and I'd have to look at what that spacing is. I can't speak specifically to what NCDOT requirements are for permitting billboards, but I do know that the first box that has to be checked is it has to be allowed in the underlying zoning district in the jurisdiction where it's proposing to go. So that's the first check of the box. Beyond that, I'm not sure what their permitting has, but we actually have a spacing requirement in our ordinance that would prohibit one. I believe it's within a thousand or twelve hundred feet of another one. So you're looking at at least a quarter mile in either direction on the same side of the road.
Or otherwise, we would be looking at eight.
That's kinda where I was going with that, Jack.
Yeah, and the other side, so.
Yeah, right, so eight on one side and eight on the other. Yeah.
Any additional questions for staff? Thank you, Mr. Smith. We will go into public hearing. Mark Chiorrello, Chiorrello? If you will state your name, address, and zip code for the record, please.
Yes, I'm attorney Mark Chiorrello, three oh one North Main Street, Winston-Salem, two seven one oh one. I represent the owners in this matter. This parcel was landlocked by the development of four twenty-one. You saw the map, it's stuck in a corner. It's really not terribly usable. It's been unused since that time. My client thinks that this is the best use for it. We're, we're upzoning it the absolute minimum. We submitted a map drawing the minimum setbacks from it. We are repurposing the smallest possible amount to have the lowest intensity, least impact rezoning we can to make some use of this property. And as you discuss at length, it's not in the view corridor. It could be it's not. Any questions?
Mr. Chiorrello? None at this time, thank you.
Good, thank you.
How much time is left?
Mr. Chairman, set your lottery ticker for eleven because you've got eleven minutes.
All right, well, anyone else here to speak in support of this? All right, let's move to the opposition. I have Mr. David Taylor. If you would state your name, address, and zip code for the record, please.
David Taylor, I live at eighty-four oh one Shallowford Road, Lewisville, two seven zero two three. And my property is within five hundred feet of the subject parcel. When we purchased our home, our primary consideration was the zoning and we felt that the zoning would protect us. that the zoning would protect us. Most of the zoning adjacent to US 421 around Louisville is agricultural or residential. I am unaware of any billboard along the 12-mile stretch between Yadkin County and Salas Creek Parkway. For travelers along this highway, NC DOT already offers the blue logo signage as well as tourist-oriented directional signs. Meeting drivers also use GPS features on a routine basis to locate businesses, restaurants, hotels. This parcel in question was purchased less than a year ago for $6,000. At that time and to this date, its zoning is residential, and its deed includes a restriction that no quote "business of any type" allowed on this property quote. Not only am I concerned about the appearance of a billboard and the possibility of additional billboards along what is now a scenic gateway to Forsyth County and Winston-Salem, I'm also concerned about a large lighted structure behind my home, which would diminish the enjoyment of our property and its value. Lastly, should the county at a later time rescind any zoning or permit for a billboard, it would likely face legal costs and be required to use taxpayer money to compensate the owner if they would like it to be later removed, as you all have alluded to. I urge the board to deny, to recommend denial of this request.
Any questions for Mr. Taylor?
I've got one question that's not specifically relative to your remarks. Is this the last opportunity to ask a question related to the case itself?
To Mr. Taylor?
To, to staff more than likely.
No, no, there's going to be another opportunity for staff after I close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you.
How much time is left?
10 minutes and 15 seconds, so we're not going for more.
All right. Anyone else here to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed. Any additional questions for staff, Mr. Steelman?
Yes, sir. Just one for the record. As the regulations currently are written, what would be the height limit on, on an outdoor advertising sign in this zoning classification, in the proposed zoning classification?
Yeah, in the size, what's the square footage of the sign?
We're searching in one, one second.
And I have another question. If I own that lot that's got the RS40 on it right there, and I know the first, the closest 500 feet to the highway, can I put up a four-by-eight peaches-for-sale sign out there? I'm an ag user, I don't need any, I don't need any rezoning.
That would.
Peaches won't grow in those.
Well, you're right.
I was going to say, wait a second. How are you doing this?
So, Mr. Lamb, the RS40 property doesn't appear to have any frontage on the highway, so you wouldn't be allowed to advertise on the highway.
All right, let's go over two parcels to where you've got a large ag lot with frontage on 421. Same question.
Thank you, sir.
That's one we would probably have to look at how some specific terms are used in the general statutes, because again, there's those protections for
Ag.
Ag tourism and seeing, seeing what, what words were used in terms of display and whether it had to be on a primary, an access road to the side, or whether it could just be any road that happens to have frontage.
I just, my challenge is that if we made a mistake, we made a mistake with the view corridor, but we can't assume that we made the mistake. I mean, I assumed that the people that were looking at it said, this is how far the view corridor needs to be extended, and ended it there. Now, circumstances may have changed such that the view corridor should be extended, but notwithstanding that possible future change in legislation, you know, the view corridor is not there now.
Mr. Lamb, your question is the height is 35 feet, and the area size is, I shall have outside the city center maximum, it shall be 300 square feet.
300 square feet. Okay.
Thanks.
Any additional questions for staff? All right, is there a motion? Anyone like to make a motion on this?
I move that the planning board find that the request is inconsistent with a comprehensive plan for F 1639.
Second.
Motion by Ms. McRae, second by Mr. Grubbs. Any discussion? All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. As unanimous.
A further move that the planning board recommend denial of F 1639.
Second.
Motion by Ms. McRae, second by Mr. Grubbs. Any discussion? All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign.
Aye.
5-3. Lamb, 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 so 5-3.
Mr. Chairman, board, the next case we're going to hear is.
Yeah, let them know what happened. Thank you.
The next case we're going to hear is case B6, and this will be UDO CC 26, and we'll hear from Dan Rankin on this proposed text amendment.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
I'm Dan Rankin, and as Chris said, I'm here to present UDO CC 26. And what that is, it's a proposed text amendment for UDO to amend chapters 3, 5, 6, and 11 of the Unified Development Ordinances to revise our standards for different daycare uses in our community. And petitioner in this case is the Planning and Development Services staff. Bit of background on this case, this, the initial prompt for this case came from a change in state regulations towards the end of last year. The state altered their regulations for what they call family childcare homes. And what those are, those are small in-residence daycares, which are comparable to our, what we currently in our UDO consider, small home child daycare uses. And what the state did, they expanded their allowed capacity from eight children to a maximum of 10 children. I should also mention at this juncture, the state has a fairly similar regulation called Centers Located in Residence, and those allow for a maximum of 15 children also in residence. Another item that kind of contributed to our thinking with this text amendment is, of course, where we currently have a pretty acute shortage of childcare services, both in our county and in the state of North Carolina in general. So staff, we took this as an opportunity to look at all of our daycare, all of our daycare regulations within our UDO, not just the in-residence. So very first thing we did, we set out to do a peer city review to look at how our peer communities regulate different daycare uses. We looked at Durham, Greensboro, High Point, Raleigh, and Wilmington. And the, we found that two cities allow for a maximum of 15 children to be supervised in residence, and three cities allow for a maximum of eight. We also found that our, our UDO was unique in having two different use types, if you will, for in-residence daycares. All five of our peer communities just have one use. We also bringing back things to a more local level, we found within the triad that both Greensboro and High Point essentially allow for their in-residence child daycare services to be allowed by right with conditions within most of their residential districts. Moving over to commercial daycares, we found that virtually all of our peer communities allow for commercial daycare uses to be established by right within non-residential districts. So that is, the last point there in terms of the commercial daycare uses is quite different from how our UDO is configured for Winston-Salem and Forsyth County. Currently, to establish a commercial daycare use in non-residential districts generally requires a board of adjustment or a planning board review. So that was one of the first changes we wanted to put forward with this text amendment, shifting those uses by right within non-residential districts, again, for all daycare uses. We did this out of recognition that those commercial districts often allow for more intense uses than daycare uses. Staff, we also believe that daycare uses are a fine fit for commercial districts in our UDO. Second kind of big item within this text amendment, we wanted to merge and bring together our small home and large home regulations for daycare uses into one use, which we now call a child daycare home. Again, that's something all our peer communities do, they just have one use for the in-residence daycare. We, we were proposing that this use would be allowed by right in all districts, excepting the general industrial. We're also, the main limitation on this use, I feel, is it being limited to being established within a residence, our church, our religious institution, and that, that's currently a limit for the small and large home uses as well, or the child daycare services. In terms of capacity, we're proposing that for, for this new combined use, a limit of three to 12 children when all children are preschool, or excuse me, when any child is preschool age, or 15 children when all children are school age. That's similar to the large home limits that we currently have, and also relates to the state limits for centers located in residence. Very last point, there is a provision that a care provider's own school-aged children wouldn't count towards those limits. Next, kind of big item within this text amendment, we, we revised how we treat daycare accessory uses for churches and religious institutions. Staff, when we reviewed our UDO, we found kind of two points that we felt didn't really have a strong rationale. Currently, daycares that are accessory to schools or churches or religious institutions need to be operated by, directly by those institutions, like by their staff or by their employees. There's also a provision requiring that the buildings also be used for educational religious purposes. In the first count, we found that daycare services that are operating in these settings, it's often on a subcontracted basis. So we felt that there wasn't really a strong need for UDO to address that. And for the latter point, the, the building provision, an example, when staff met and we talked over this text amendment, an example we kept coming back to was an example of like a church campus that has either a former rectory or small residence on their campus. You know, although that doesn't have a religious program or purpose, it's fine for a daycare and would be a benefit for their, for the surrounding community. Last point I wanted to cover before I sum up, kind of relates to parking with, with many of the daycare standards and uses within our UDO, many of them currently require passenger loading and unloading parking spaces. Currently, our UDO requires these to be separate from the general parking area. It's kind of a minor point, but staff is proposing that they be allowed to be integrated within the general parking area and be demarcated. Several reasons for this. One, when retrofitting existing buildings, it just makes developing the site that much easier. Oftentimes, it's difficult to eke in more parking in a site that's already built out. There's a lot of attendant sustainability and environmental benefits that would go along with this, less impervious surface area, less stormwater to deal with. And we also believe in some of the less intense, excuse me, less intense districts, this would make the daycares kind of blend in even more with the surroundings, just less parking. Or not less parking, just a more, more unified parking, I should say. So to sum up here, general purpose of this amendment is to encourage the establishment or expansion of daycare uses within our city and county, again, out of recognition of the shortage. Staff, we also believe there might be some spinoff economic benefits here, given that, you know, sometimes parents do either reduce the amount of hours that they're working or perhaps drop out of the labor force altogether in order to care for their children. So we, we believe that anything we can do to kind of encourage this industry along would be better, better for all of us. Staff, we also believe that allowing these, allowing different daycare uses by right within our non-residential zoning districts would not negatively impact those districts, as those districts already allow more intense uses, as mentioned before. And the very last point, staff, we also believe that all of the revisions we're proposing simplify the ordinance for users and readers, and also bring us into generally closer alignment with our peer communities. So, and staff, we do recommend approval of this text amendment, and thank you very much for your time. Certainly happy to try and answer any questions you might have about this text, proposed text amendment. Thank you so much.
I applaud your efforts in try, in allow, being more permissive with respect to where we can put daycares. I think a question for you guys real quickly. B1, is, is a, is daycare permitted use under B1?
When you're saying B1, you mean HB?
No. I mean, I'm probably thinking Kernersville now. So, all right, so a typical, like LO.
If you, if you go to the bottom, if you go to the bottom of this chart and go up four lines, it says child daycare center.
Yep.
In residential, RM8, RM12, RM18, and RMU, it's, it's still, today and after this, if it were adopted, still requires a board of adjustment special use permit in those residential districts.
Okay.
Once you get to NO, all the way across, we're, we're proposing changing our current requirements, which essentially either require a board of adjustment special use permit or a planning board review of a site plan that comes to this board as a straight zoning permit where you just come to staff. So our least intense commercial districts, NO, LO, NB, PB, basically across the board except for GI, will be allowed to have a daycare center just coming into our office to get a permit.
Is all IP already allowed, does it all already allow for?
IP already allows for it with a planning board review of a site plan.
CPO campus, is that what that is?
Yes. No, CPO is corporate park office.
What is Haynes Headquarters?
It is currently either CPO or GB. I can't remember which.
I believe that's CPO.
And it's allowed in both?
Currently, currently as a, as a planning board review, but it would be allowed as a use by right if this were adopted.
All right, thank you.
I've got two questions. The first, I think, relates primarily to, to definitions. Commercial daycare, if, if I wanted to, to, to provide daycare services in my house, in my neighborhood, and wanted to provide the highest quality care, which I would try to achieve by hiring a professional operator, does that make it commercial?
Uh, no, I don't believe so. I believe the, the tipping points that would make it commercial, if you're, if you're operating the daycare in your residence, our UDO doesn't.
Anyone, yeah.
Yeah, our UDO doesn't have an employment requirement, I don't believe.
Well, I just want to go back to that and read the definition, and child daycare, which is basically the consolidated use that's combining child daycare large home and child daycare small home, there's a piece in there where we've added, a child daycare home is permitted only in a private residence occupied by the licensed operator of the daycare.
That's why I'm asking, yeah.
Oh, yes. Okay, good catch. Thank you.
Yeah, so in a home, that would be the case. I mean, if you're operating a center and you're the investor, you could have someone come run it, but I mean, that has to be in a non-residential district.
Or, so in my neighborhood, a property owner couldn't provide childcare services if provided by a private operator?
Correct.
Is that our intent?
Yes, and that's always been the intent.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's always been in the ordinance that way for both small home, under the, under the current UDO, day, child daycare small home and child daycare large home already have that requirement that has to be, has to be operated by the resident of the property. So we're not changing that, it's just consolidating the two separate uses into one and expanding the number of kids and changing the approval process, but to live in the home, it still has to, you still, the person that operates the daycare has to live there, if that makes sense.
Okay. Second question, I think during some of our earlier conversations, there was a question tossed out about do we want to allow or not allow parking in front yards in residential districts?
Um, well, we, I know within this UDO, there is a provision limiting the, the establishment of like a play area. In terms of parking, I'd kind of defer to like our land use administrator team. We didn't, we, I'll, I'll say this about the text amendment, that didn't, it didn't change the parking, general parking requirements within the UDO in that specific respect.
Are you allowed to park in the front yard?
Not totally. It's like, what's, what's the current UDO have to say about that? Do you know?
UDO is based on the use. Your loading and unloading would be on your driveway, not, not in the yard, so to speak, but.
Yeah, there's no conditions for the use that require the placement of parking relative to the structures, but any parking that is being used for ordinance credit would have to meet the standards of designated parking space design in Section 6 of the UDO. So they couldn't just park on the grass, as Mark alluded to, but there's nothing that would keep folks from parking between the right of way and the front of the structure.
It would just, okay. All right. I don't think that's what most, most neighbors would prefer, so just bringing that up.
Yeah, and again, that's not a change in the ordinance currently. The current ordinance, I mean, essentially require the, the number of parking spaces is is one space plus one space per employee, because I mean, you can't have an outside employee, you know, come in and help you run the daycare under, under these provisions. So, you know, essentially, what generally happens under a current situation is you, if you have a driveway, you'll generally have a little of an expansion of your driveway to one side or the other to accommodate these two parking spaces in addition to the parking that you have for your own single-family residence. So generally speaking, it doesn't become too intrusive, it just looks like, you know, you have three kids and you've got five cars and you have somewhere for everyone to park. It really doesn't become a parking lot, generally speaking, for a single-family home for one of these operations, because in order to make a profit, you're not going to have a ton of employees, you're going to, generally speaking, going to have yourself and probably one other employee in operating a small home daycare, or a child daycare home.
And what's the limit on the kids on that?
Fifteen.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it's not a big operation.
So I have two questions. The first one, similar to what Mr. Stillman was getting on, getting on to. So say you have an older lady in the neighborhood that keeps a couple babies, you know, while mom and, mom and dads go to work, you know what I mean? Or she keeps kids when they get off the bus line. She's not a formal operator, whatever the term is. Does this cover her, or is it just if her neighbors call the city on her? Just wondering, because that's really...
Just as with anything, it's, I mean, you know, if someone calls and complains, I mean, yeah, technically, she's operating a daycare.
Right, right, right. Okay, so just wondering, because I think that's the reality of what it would end up being, it's a lady in the neighborhood keeping kids. The other question is, I didn't see, now maybe I skipped over it, is if I have an accessory dwelling at my house, I can't keep the kids in the accessory dwelling? The accessory, I saw only heard it was in reference to churches. Is it just because of the nature of accessories and everybody, a lot of people don't like them, or the fact that the size limits?
I think it would change the nature of it to a commercial use, because it's not your primary domicile.
Accessory dwelling.
Yeah, it's like, it's for grandma and...
Well, yeah, I'm just saying it's a piece of my property that could be used in that manner, you know?
Yeah, I mean, there's no restriction against that.
There's certainly an interpretation component to this, but I would go back to the definition of child daycare, again, the combined use that we're talking about to replace the small and large home, and it talks about permitted only in a private residence occupied by the licensed operator. We would interpret that to mean that since the operator isn't staying in the ADU, that, again, that's another accessory use, but this accessory use would have to be in the building where they were occupying. And frankly, I think a lot of these ADUs wouldn't meet the state licensure requirements, which have a minimum square footage per child and things of that nature that can rise pretty quickly to a level that an ADU can't accommodate, but, I mean, certainly, Mr. Fairby, your point is well taken, but I think just to try and shield neighbors from some of the potential impacts of this use, the goal was to keep it in the larger structure on the, on the property.
And then, relative to what you just said, so if I have 15 kids in my house, does my house have to be a certain size to withhold?
It would have to, to, basically to meet that state calculation.
And, you know, keep in mind, you have to get a, you have to get a logo, you have to get the permit from us, but you also have to get the permit from the state, and it's a tandem process. They go through our process, it's, our process is too prone, they go through and get something from us, and then they go to the state, they get their state permit, and then they come back and get our permit. So it's kind of a, it's kind of a feedback loop whenever they're actually going through the process, but you know, then not only do they have to meet our requirements, they have to meet the state requirements, and they're subject to the state regulations surrounding daycare. So again, ours is a land use consideration, the state's process, you know, they have to make sure the land use spot is checked, but they're, you know, they're looking at it more from the health and human services and the, you know, the care of the child. So again, ours isn't the only box that has to be checked, it's just one of many.
Okay.
Any additional questions? Great questions. All right, would anyone like to, what's the pleasure of the board on this?
Mr. Chairman, I move the planning board find that the request is consistent with the comp plan.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs, any discussion? All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposition? I saw everybody's hand go up. All right, that is unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, I further move the planning board recommend approval of UDO CC 26.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs, any discussion? All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, the same sign. That is unanimous. Now we will move to the staff report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll quickly turn to Kirk, who'll go over what we can look forward to work session in two weeks.
All right, thank you, Chris. We have two items at this point scheduled for the work session. The first, as you all remember, Pat Pate took on the job of city manager after Lee Garrity retired last summer, and a few months ago, several board members expressed interest in having Mr. Pate come and speak to the board, and just having an opportunity to answer any questions you all may have of him. He has agreed to be present at our work session in two weeks, so he will be first on the agenda. The second item is an annual item that we have every March. Steve Smotherman, our development trends and analytics guru, will be presenting to the board the downtown investment report. So he's going to bring you up to speed on the big projects that were approved for downtown in the last year or so, and talk about trends over the last decade, and he's also going to just touch on general development trends happening in the community. So should be an interesting item.
And there may be another item that gets added, but we're still kind of working on that, so, but even with that, it won't be, it should not be a fairly lengthy meeting. I guess it might depend on how long Pat wants to stay and do a Q and A, but... With that, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn to Brian, who'll give us an April case preview, and then followed by that, I'll turn to Amy, who'll remind you of some dates coming up with Forward 2045.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, so we've got five total items next month. For now, it's three new rezoning requests, one continued case, the Colerode case for now, and one final development plan, so that's what we're looking at.
And with that, I'll turn to Amy.
All right, so we have our next round of public input meetings for Forward 2045 starting next Tuesday. You can see the dates up there, so we have next Tuesday, and Wednesday's the 19th and 20th. Then on the 25th, we have two meetings, one during lunch over at the Central Library, and then one in the evening at Rural Hall, and then we have one on the 26th over at Lee Davis Harris Community Center. These meetings will specifically address land use and growth management, they will be drop-in, so there won't be that initial presentation, and folks can come anytime during that two-hour period to provide their comments. It'll function very similar to what we did in October or November, where we posed questions on boards, and folks can use dots and post-it notes to provide their answers to those questions. And I think at the work session, we worked it out, have planning board members at that. I have Brenda coming to the meeting on the 19th, Chris to the meeting on the 20th, Sal you'll be coming to the AM, the lunch meeting on the 25th, Jack, the meeting on the 20, the evening meeting on the 25th, and then Walter, the 26th. But it's gone out, announcements for this has been sent out through email, through all the folks who did the survey, as well as anyone who came to the public input meetings in October, as well as our stakeholder groups. It's been posted on the city's website, the planning board, planning department's website, the Facebook page, and I've gotten a couple calls from media outlets, so we've done press releases well, and I've reached out to the county to put it on their Facebook page as well. So hopefully, folks will get the word and, and the announcement to come to these meetings and, and ask, answer some questions related to land use, what they want to see.
Will we have any specific role there, or are we just there to learn from the whole process?
Just to learn, there'll be no specific role, especially with drop-ins, it'll be pretty, pretty easy, you just sort of go around, and, and the questions are fairly simple, but they will couple of things like what's a good transitional use between single family and commercial, which has come up in our discussions, you know, what kind of uses do you want to see around the Beltway interchanges, what's appropriate in rural areas, those types of questions. So they should be pretty, hopefully, simple and straightforward questions for folks to answer, so there won't be any role besides just listening to folks and seeing what they say.
Thanks, Amy.
Mr. Chairman, Board, I do have two additional items, just want to make you aware of a couple things our staff is participating in, in conjunction with Winston-Salem Recreation and Parks. On Saturday, the 23rd, it's Celebrate National Take a Walk in the Park Day. Didn't know there was such a thing, but our staff will be working in conjunction with Recreation and Parks. There's a walking tour through Miller Park, kind of getting some of the history of Miller Park, and also Long Creek Park, both of those are at 9:00 AM, so I guess you have to choose which one you want to go to, but... And then the other thing, in our continuing update of, that we built this since, since it was such a significant project, that is going to be coming to a close on Saturday, March 23rd. You know, it ran its course with us through the month of February and then moved to Winston-Salem State. It's closing on the 23rd, and there are two events at Winston-Salem State that day. There is a, the Winston-Salem State student presentations are being done that day from 1:00 to 4:00, and also at the same time, there is, it's an event called Community Sharing Three Times Two, which is an opportunity to try to gather some oral histories, also the opportunity to, for folks to bring in documents and photographs and other type of things to be digitized. Again, so Winston-Salem State can try to archive some of the important history that's being lost over the course of time. So both of those events are going on, on the 23rd, and I just wanted to make sure to keep you aware of that, and also anyone who's watching at home that might be interested, just so that they know of those. And those things are also being advertised, I'm sure, through Winston-Salem State, and then also through Recreation and Parks. I don't think we personally are doing anything more with the "we built this" since it's run its course with us, but I'm sure Winston-Salem State's still pushing that item.
Thank you.
And that's it.
All right, is there anything else for the good of the order? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Grubbs.
Thank you very much.